School board meeting, it's Monday, August 18th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Roll call.
Everyone is present.
Having a quorum will call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wabash City Schools provides a relevant and rigorous education founded upon relationships to ensure each student is college and career-ready for success in a global community. Welcome. We have no recognitions tonight. We do have a revision. We need to approve revision four, I through N. I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the revisions say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on an agenda item? Okay. The consent agenda, we have minutes from August 4, 2025. Some claims, no donations tonight, and for financials, we have a revenue and expense update and the appropriations report. I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
All right, we will start with our July revenue and expenses. Revenue was just about 70,000 less than what we had projected. We had lower grant and cafeteria reimbursements from the state, which cafeteria doesn't surprise me in the summertime. We also, our, our basic grant was a bit lower. They go through, starting in July, with the number that we guesstimate our enrollment will be. And so our enrollment, we ended at about 1369. We had estimated our enrollment to be 1325. So the basic grant did drop just a bit, starting in July. Our expenses were lower than what we had projected. We had projected for a payment to Apple because for, I guess, the last several years, we've been making a payment to Apple. So we've just always had that on there. We did decide to push our iPad refresh out one year. So our expenses were about $200,000 less by not refreshing. We still do need to look at our devices this year and decide how we want to do our refresh. I know that Mr. Vale has already started conversations with Apple to look at various options. Do we refresh secondary next year and then maybe do elementary the year before? Do we want to look at potentially reducing what grades we're using these in? I will say, we will still need to have, to have to have classroom sets, just because much of our curriculum, it does have a digital component. But that's, that's something that we will start talking about later this year.
How often do we usually refresh?
I believe we normally refresh every three years, and this is year four. So this really needs to be our last year with them. So at least for the, at the secondary level.
Some sort of money out of them.
Right.
Return them in.
Yeah. Our payroll expenses were also a bit lower than what we had projected. So we had projected a net loss, but because those decreases in expenses, whoops. We did end up with a net income of just over $50,000. Moving on to our key fund balances. Ed fund is just a tad over 1.8 million. Operations is negative 172, 536 dollars. And rainy day has just over $484,000. The total of our key fund balance is 2, 2,127,005 dollars. So those are looking pretty good. You can see we had a big jump in our ed fund during this month. And just a reminder, we're using those rainy day for several of our operations. And so that number will continue to go down throughout the rest of this year. All right, then moving on to the appropriations report.
Oh, yes.
So our target, this is for July, so it'd be seven out of 12 months. Our target percentage is 58.3%. In the ed fund, the amount of revenue we collected is at 58.3, so very close to where we need to be. When you look at the different funds, all of them are well below that 58.3. Our summer school, driver's training and summer school, we went a little bit over. One thing to remember, though, that this is seven out of 12. Once these, we keep going the rest of the year, those will get a little bit better. For example, our driver's training, that's the 1360 line. That will end the year at 63.7, so it will be below the 100%. The, the summer school, we knew that this year was really going to be just a guess at how much we needed to budget for it because we weren't sure what elementary, what that second, third grade summer school is going to look like. And we will be getting reimbursed from the state for most of these costs. We have until September 15th to get our costs turned in, and then we'll get refunded for quite a bit of these. Overall, our ed fund is, we're at 53.2%, so well below that 58.3. When you move to the operations, we have collected 66.9% of our revenue. So over that 58.3, we have a lot that, right now, are over the 58.3. The first one, for example, the vocational school. I went through and projected that out. It will end underneath the appropriation. So many of these will even out. And some of them, for example, the 1,4700, that is one that we did move to rainy day. So it doesn't look real great right now, but by the end of the year, it will look a little bit better. When you look at our total expenditures, we're at 60.2. And I went back and looked, in, in May, we were at 46% when we only wanted to be at 41.6. So we were 4.4% over. In June, we were at 53.7 when we wanted to be at 50, so we dropped it to 3.7. And now in July, we're at 60.2, where we want to be at 58.3, so 1.9. So we've done a good job of getting, closing that gap. So hopefully, the rest of this year, we'll see that continue to happen. Any questions on either of those?
Is it typical that we're front-loading a lot of our money during, like, the beginning of the year? You know what I'm saying, like, the funds that's coming out?
There are more payrolls for the first half of the year, I believe. And we do 26 pays. We only have 10 from the beginning of the year till the end, beginning of the school year till the end of the calendar year. So 16 of our 26 pays happen January in the beginning. So that is one reason. And then some of the things, like when we pay Heartland, we do pay in January. We pay a large lump sum for operations. So.
All right, cool.
Any other questions from the board? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. The next regular scheduled board meeting will be Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025, here at City Hall, at 6 o'clock PM. There's some items of communication. No old business, new business. A, board will be presented with the 2024 through 2025 iRead data for OJ Neighbors Elementary.
Well, I don't know about Beth, but I have been really excited to share this information. Just to give you some background information, iRead, it measures foundational reading skills through grade three. Any student that is enrolled in an accredited Indiana school must participate in and attain a passing score on iRead. One thing that was new in 2025 is that all grade two students that were enrolled in an accredited Indiana school must also participate in iRead. OJ did pilot the test for 23 and 24, so we kind of knew what to expect from it. Also new this year, Senate Enrolled Act I requires third-grade students to be retained if they did not pass iRead after multiple test administrations, so spring and summer, if they do not qualify for a good cause exemption. They did change the good cause exemptions in the past. It was special ed. If you're a special ed student, you have an intellectual disability, or your IEP case conference committee determines that retaining them would not be appropriate. And then also, English language learners, they could get a good cause exemption. So if they've received services for fewer than two years, they have an ILP. The committee can determine, again, that it's not appropriate to retain them based on this test. Some things that they've added, they added a math exceptionality. So if a student passes iLearn in third grade, the math portion, but they don't pass the third grade iRead, we are allowed to give them a good cause exemption and move them on. They also added that if a student had been retained twice and received intense intervention, they would move on. And then if they have been previously retained in third grade, so if we have a third grade student that takes it, does not qualify for that good cause exemption, we retain them. If they take it again the following year as a third grader, they would get to move on, even if they don't pass it. They also changed summer school. It required us to offer summer school to second-grade students that had been identified at risk, as well as all non-passing third-grade students. And if a student did not attend summer school, or they attended less than 90%, 90% of the program, they have to participate in an individual reading plan the following year until they pass the test. So moving on to our third-grade results, and I've, I've got three years of data here. Because each year is a different group of kids, we don't do anything with cohort comparisons. Our pass rate for this year, and this included students that passed as second graders and then passed as third graders, was 94.1%. And you can see that the last two years, we were at 82.7 and 77.2. So we saw a tremendous increase in our pass rate. Now, of the 118 students that were in that cohort, seven of them did qualify for a good cause exemption. So like we've always done in the past, we back those students out because it's not appropriate for them to, for us to consider that they would pass this test. And so when you back that out, we are at 111 out of 111 passing the test. So that means we did not have to retain a student, which is exciting news. I know that was something that Mrs. Philippi was concerned about, and so just kudos to Mrs. Philippi, to our teachers. Did a great job. We should really be proud of this. When you look at how we fare against public schools and non-pubs or private schools, you can see that, and I'm using the 94.1 because the state does not count good cause exemptions. In the past, we've never had to turn those in. This year, we do have to report that. But the data right now is just our, our, our pass rate. So public schools averaged 86.5, which, if you look across, that's an increase. You can see we're performing well above that. When you look at non-pubs, non-pubs were at 96.1, so private schools. So we are just a couple percentage points below the private schools. So another thing to be very, very proud of. The one thing, the ESA, when I first saw that, I didn't know what it was, and so I had to do some research. That is the educational savings account for students that are special ed. If they go to a homeschool that accepts that ESA money, then they had to take iRead. And you can see that they had a pass rate of 35.3%. So the average of all of those is 87.3. Again, we are above or on the tails of the private schools. One thing I did look up, 84 districts performed higher than Wabash City Schools. 269 performed lower than us. So I was really excited to see that. You know, we're in the, the top third. That is, that's a great job, excellent job by our teachers. Just really excited to share this information. We'll look now at our second-grade students. This year, it was no longer a pilot year. We had 77 students that test, tested, and we had 42 that passed, so we had a passing rate of 55%. You can see each year, we've gotten that to grow just a little bit. I think the more that we're giving the test and learn from it, the better we're doing. So those 42 students will not have to take iRead next year as third graders, which is really nice because the 35 that didn't pass, our teachers have that data, and they can start working with those students right now on what they need to get them to that pass rate. And I think last year, I think our data from last year shows that what our teachers are doing is working. So next step, we have our new wonders curriculum in grades K through five. And we also continue to use Roxy Reading for intervention. Both of these align with the science of reading. We'll continue this year with the Indiana Literacy Cadre to provide coaching to our teachers in grades K through three. I know that our grade two teachers were excited because they had their win groups already set based on the iRead data from last year. So we're able to hit the ground running from day one when it comes to intervention. We will continue doing trainings for staff on RTI, so how do we respond when students don't get it? New this year, for grades three through eight, we have our iLearn checkpoint assessment. So this will help us as we're working with those third graders. Let me not open. Our third-grade students that still need to pass iLearn, they're going to be, or iRead, they're going to be taking an iLearn checkpoint. And so that data, we still are learning how to use that data, but we're hoping that it may also help us get them ready for iRead. So that's kind of where we're at. Again, I was excited to share this. Kudos to OJ.
Well done. Any questions from the board? Okay. Item B. Board will be updated on the new PCAP program at Wabash Middle High School. Mr. Blossom?
All right, here we go. Okay, so proud to talk about the PCAP program, where we started year two of that, and tell you all about where we are at. Okay, what is PCAP? So Horace County has taught for me before, so she knows project-based learning. We did a lot with the Buck Institute back in the day. They've kind of rebranded it as PBL Works now, and we did some work for them. But think about project-based learning, is that's the start, but so much more. The central components that make it different are around the side, and there's some more coming up here as well. It's relationship-centered learning, it's integrated hands-on curriculum. Career pathways that are aligned with the program, post-secondary pathways also, so we're preparing for college or career. Both of those are embedded in this. And it's characterized by high school industry and post-secondary partners. So that's a, a big component, is that we want to work with our employers and the community, our community partners. Chelsea's going to talk a little bit about that, our relationship with Wabash County here shortly. And of course, we're aligned with Ivy Tech Community College, Indiana University, Kokomo, in Mount Ball State as a partner in offering dual credit at Wabash High School.
Are they? Oh, great.
Yeah, yeah. Japanese for Ball State this year, which is cool. So essential components in PCAP are crew to begin with. Community partners and employer, employer challenges, as we talked about. It's student-centered, there's student ownership. It connects learning to students' lives and their community, high level of collaboration. Purposeful, there's multi-layered projects. Authenticity is important, and then also feedback. So why PCAP for us? When we were selected by CEAL as a year-two PCAP school and offered this opportunity, what we saw with year one and CEAL and the data that they came was increased engagement. So our students, county members, back in the day, we had a transition academy. We've always been trying to figure out a way to engage our kids that didn't respond well to traditional teaching. Gosh, and that was all the way back, I think I taught in it the first year. And then I, I went into the assistant principal position when we were running Transition Academy back in the day. We've always tried to figure out a way, the best way possible to engage these kids. These kids that we talked about at Wabash Middle School at the time were, were eighth graders, and they all identified that they learned much better through projects. And we asked them about their favorite classes. It was rarely a core class. It was an art class. It was industrial technology, something that they can use their hands in, something that they're active, not necessarily sitting there taking notes all the time. But if it was a core class, it was because they really engaged with that teacher, that special relationship with that teacher. And that was enough to motivate them to be in the class. We also note from the PCAP schools, there are better grades and better attendance. So there's a market increase in both of those, demonstrating that the PCAP students, who at once identified, all of them, we were at Winchester for a study visit, and all of those students didn't like school at all. But one year in PCAP, they love coming to school. And anecdotally, gosh, we're seeing some kids, we've been in school for one week, and we're seeing some happy kids that, you know, really didn't like coming to school in the past, but we've had them for five days now. And they're smiling coming in the door, which is, which is great to see. Also, improved student learning outcomes. Since we're focusing on real-world application, interpersonal skills, problem-solving, teamwork, those sorts of things, it better prepares our students for life after high school, whether they enter the workforce directly or whether they head to post-secondary education. I think all of you would agree that that's something we need to be better at at schools, especially the interpersonal, interpersonal communication schools. And skills in a digital era, where they're used to texting, or I don't even know how to read, most of the text. But we, they, at some point, they're going to have to interact with others. And there's an emphasis on that in PCAP. So our PCAP timeline was this, we started in the spring of, of '24, where we were selected by CEAL. CEAL is from the University of Indianapolis, the Center of Education, Center for Excellence and Leadership of Learning. We worked with them as an early college school for a long time. So personally, I think I've been working with them for about 13 years now, maybe, maybe 14. We were selected by them for this. We're lucky to get on the side of it as we were, because we've got 110,000 over two years to help implement this program. So last year was the, was the training year, the planning year, and then now we're in full implementation. In the fall of '24, we, we attended some meetings, and we did our study visit, as I mentioned earlier, Winchester Junior Senior High School. Spring, we identified some of our students and took them on a trip. Nobody had thought about doing that, so we feel pretty good. We let our kids on a bus, and I've had to meet those kids, participate in a day of learning, just for them to get a feel of it. And some of our kids were like, that's really not for me. Many of these.
That's good to know, too.
And other of our kids were like, yes, it is for me, and then some in the middle, too.
That's important.
Yeah, it was, it was a really good idea. We also purchased a lot of equipment and supplies, and we'll continue to do that. In the spring, we completed PBL Works, PBL 101 training. That was, we did that online over, for three days with a team. That used to be, it used to be Buck Institute, they, they're now called, seems like that's not a good name, right? So they went to PBL Works. In spring, I think it was spring when we met with Burrow Wabash County, and then also Heartland Career Center, because they're really important parts of, of our plans. And then the, oh, I actually had to travel to the High Tech High in there in the spring. That was great. Got to go to San Diego, and that, the whole school corporation essentially is, is project-based learning, this sort of thing. So that, we learned a ton. I also got a lot of resources that we use. They have some AI-based planning tools that really are helpful.
How long has San Diego been?
Oh, gosh.
Long, long time.
Long, long time. Yeah, yeah. And then finally, in the summer, we went to our required PCAP meetings early in June in Indianapolis, and then we continued to meet through July. Chelsea was able to secure some space upstairs at Burrow Wabash County, so we were able to meet with a team offsite there, so it's good. All right, so in PCAP, we have, there's some vernacular that we want to get through. Students are called scholars. Teachers are called lead learners. And if you're a first year, you're a chapter one. If you're a second year, you're a chapter two. So we're just getting started this year. So we have chapter-one scholars. All of them are freshmen. We've got 19 in total, 13 boys and six girls, so far, going really, really well. And this is our team of lead learners. So of course, Chelsea is here from Burrow Wabash County. She's our employer liaison and also our crew teacher. Kyle Kelshammer has been with us, gosh, for a while now.
Yeah.
Eight or nine years. An English teacher, and he's our PCAP English nine teacher. Randy LaPage is, is our seventh and eighth grade guidance counselor for PCAP. He's the PCAP guidance counselor. This has been great because he knows the kids on seventh and eighth grade and has developed that relationship. So that really is helpful. He will stay with these PCAP kids all the way through high school, so that he'll be their guidance counselor. Again, relationships are super important, and that's why it's important that we keep Randy with them. Sean Eiler, our industrial technology teacher, he's doing PCAP advanced manufacturing and construction for us. Ryan Evans, our science teacher, is doing PCAP for science. And then Justin Denny has been instrumental in everything that we do. He has a long, long history in project-based learning. There needs time in, oh, gosh, Columbus.
Columbus.
Ah, mess it up. I said east, and then he tells me south. Anyway, he's our algebra one teacher, but like I said, he has a tremendous experience in that. He's really been a leader for our group. Okay, so in PCAP, you, you can have as many pathways as you want. We started with, with one that we put together. So it's advanced manufacturing and construction. So it's essentially what happens in the industrial tech classrooms, whether that's conventional nomenclature, we've got the metal shop and the wood shop, right? Essentially is what we've called them. So what we have are three different courses. Our integrated introduction to advanced manufacturing, introduction to construction, and introduction to design processes. We block those at the beginning of the day. They also have an advisory board together as well. And the courses that we integrate into these projects are English nine, algebra one, and for science. And then our students, for the remainder of the day, are able to have a license. Year two, we'll get there eventually. I'll talk to you next year at this time and give you another update. They will switch to Principles of Advanced Manufacturing, Principles of Construction, Advanced Manufacturing Technology, and we will integrate English ten, Business Math, and Biology into these. Okay, Biology's going to be a tough one, but we'll figure it out. First science, not so much. So I mentioned that we met with the Career Center earlier as well, and they were really instrumental in helping us develop this, these courses, specifically the introduction courses and then the principles-level courses as well. There's CTE funding attached to this, so it was really important, and when we're developing a program, because we knew we had two years of 110,000, we need to be able to generate some sort of business.
Exactly, exactly.
So we generate about $300 per student per semester on the intro-level courses. So I think that comes to about 15,000 or 16,000, I believe, for this year. Next year, that, that doubles, because these are all 740 dollars per kid per semester. So that will definitely help our sustainability moving forward. Okay, whoops, that's not there. Years three and four are kind of in the works. What we always, what we've done at Wabash High School is done a very good job of doing intro-level and principles-level courses, and then transitioning our kids to Heartland for the next two years, where they can get a lot of college credit, or they can get on, on work-based learning, whichever they choose. So a lot of our kids will know that they don't necessarily want to do advanced manufacturing and construction. They love the project-based learning, and they know they're going to be engaged and learn that way. And they may choose to go out to the Career Center and get into health science, for example, culinary arts.
Yeah.
Whatever it is, that's fine. There's most of this thing is wasted learning. This is a different way of going at it.
Sure.
Okay. And as I said, our key partner in this is Burrow Wabash County. So Chelsea's going to talk a little bit about, about what she's doing for us and our relationship.
Yep, so as Josh said, a big part of this is the community employer industry connections. So basically, PCAP, I like to say, is we're answering the question of whether we're ever going to use this in real life. So a lot of these projects, after kind of, we're getting our feet wet with them, but a lot of these projects are going to have a community employer attached to it. So, oh, you, you know, we're talking about this. Well, all of these information, all these skills that you're thinking about can directly translate into a job at Port Meere box. Let's bring Ford Meter Box in to introduce themselves, hey, this is what Ford Meter Box is, maybe a tour, kind of getting that face-to-face connection with those students. So maybe a few years down the line, they're applying for maybe even summer work. And say, oh, well, I met Jesse, I know Jesse, you know, kind of starting those relationships and that thought process of, there's so many opportunities and careers right here in our backyard. A lot of times, kids just don't know. So, yeah, obviously with Burrow, Wabash County, I'm talking with them every day, so it's just another reason for me to email them and reach out to them. And then, of course, on that other side is the soft skills. We don't like to necessarily just toss our kids with the employers and say, good luck. We want them, a big part of crew is setting them up for that success, having them know how to speak to adults, speak to potential employers. So every morning, I am the first face they see every morning out with crew, and we do a lot of that interpersonal stuff. So this week and last week, we've been talking about core values, which is a big thing in P cap, responsibility, respect, communication, competence, things like that. So those really core values of what do you need to be to be a successful human, really, in this society? And this week, we've been working a lot on communication. Again, a lot of these people don't super know each other, and they are gonna be together ideally for two years, these nineteen kids. So getting them all to work together as scholars on the same team. So, yeah, we've been working with a lot of communication stuff, giving and taking feedback is a big part of crew, because a lot of times they're gonna be presenting projects. And the students are the ones giving feedback, why, you know, I wonder why you did this, you know, what if you tried to look at this? Because of course, they're also gonna hopefully be getting feedback from employers. You know, they're gonna be presenting some of these project-based learnings, if Ford Meter Box comes in and says, hey, here's this project, they're gonna probably be presenting hopefully to Ford Meter Box, saying, you gave us a problem, here's the solution. So again, teaching them about feedback and all of those things, so that, again, those soft skills, those, those job skills, interpersonal skills that it's really tough to, to teach maybe in a math class, but that's what they start their day with every day.
That is our presentation. Have you got any questions?
So the day for the students, they're in, they're in one room, and then the, did you call them lead learners, the teachers? Lead learners come to that room to teach, and so then in the afternoon, when they have their electives, then they go out. But all morning, they're in the one room?
So they can be PE.
Sure.
Art, some are in band or choir. Anything, some went into the principles of the biomedical sciences if they're interested in health science. Anything, really. We like that part, because they do get to interact with the friends that necessarily aren't necessarily in P cap. But, and there's some choice, right, so they can stick with the things that they really love as well.
The lead teachers are in science, math, those guys are all continually in there the whole morning then? How does that roll?
Yeah, so they kind of, fortunately, they're very, very flexible.
Sure, sure.
Ryan Evans is there all morning.
Okay, okay.
The others are assigned for a period and then also have a prep in very different spots, just how that works. So, but they also know, and what they were good with, is like, you know, sometimes I'm gonna go straight through on the day. But maybe that next day, I might be there at all, I might take two preps on that. So contractually, they're obligated to a prep every day.
Sure.
Like I told them, look, this is up to you guys, if you want to do it this way, we'll do it this way, otherwise we'll figure it out. But these are all seasoned veterans.
Yeah, without flexibility, it's not gonna work.
Yeah, and they, I will say this, they are an exceptional group of educators, and really proud to be able to work with them and see what they're able to do with kids. You know, it used to be sometimes I would go into choir class or a band class, or, Connie knows this, I went to Lauren Mills Paul's class and watched her teach and get inspired, right? That sort of thing. But that's the same thing coming out of the P cap classroom, is seeing happy, engaged kids here in the first week of school, so we're proud to be a part of it.
And ideally, then they'll feed right into vocational school.
Yes, all of them have identified that they intend to go to Heartland Career Center when they're juniors.
And we'll be helping them prepare for that as well, applying and treating that almost like applying for a job, but that'll be a chapter two conversation.
Yeah, and freshmen here are so funky, those kids can't find their behind with both hands. I taught freshmen forever, and this is so, I'm so, aren't you glad I'm retired? You know? It's so good to see them focused, I'm very excited about this, and I'm so proud of Wabash, because we offer something for everyone, for everyone, no matter what your skill set is, and that's so cool.
So how did you identify these eighteen students? How did you identify and get them into the program? I mean, did, you know, how did you figure that out?
Mr. LaPage actually came up with that first group and talked to a bunch of kids that he thought were in potential for this. And then we've also got recommendations from the eighth grade team as well, and including Ryan Evans, had all that setup to identify some more kids. To speak to the power of teachers too, a couple of them, when they learned that Ryan Evans was teaching, is that Mr. Evans is teaching, well, I'm in.
Did you talk to parents too?
We did. It's always difficult to engage high school parents.
It is.
Had a public meeting, invited everybody, and didn't get as many as, as we hoped. But you know what? I'm gonna venture to say that our parent-teacher conference night is gonna be great, because we've got some kids that are really proud of what they're doing and enjoying this program.
My hope is that you have so many kids interested that you'll have to cap it somehow, but, you know, do you think about that? Would you cap it at twenty-five, is that, I wonder what's doable?
Yes, it's a space, you know.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I don't know if you can go much higher than.
So these.
That would represent about a quarter of the, quarter of the class. I mean, I like it personally, because that's a quarter of the class that I know we're gonna have success with.
Different way of thinking.
I hope it goes that way, I really, really do, you know, and then next year, you know, you'll have nine and ten, it'll be interesting to see how it goes and the mistakes and what you learn, you know, obviously.
We did some considerations, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
We did some considerations about adding a second pathway.
Yeah.
Maybe health science or something like that. The difficulty is, is it's hard to, if we were gonna add another pathway starting in the fall, all that planning would have to take places down. And we already, I mean, we're learning what we don't know, so it's almost best if we go get the year twos done, and then make them start another pathway, which are year ones, work out all the logistics and the challenges that are, that are in that.
So these are all students that are bound for the Career Center?
Yes.
And what if they decide to change their mind and not go to the Career Center?
That's okay too.
Will they be able to assimilate into normal?
Yes.
Yes, because that's why we're checking off all those integrated core classes, the English tens and things like that. So it's tough for a kid mid-year, so if a P cap kid decided in January that they didn't want to be a part of P cap anymore, that's a little bit touchy. But the idea is they will be at the same place that all of their peers come junior year. So if they want to continue on to go to college, fantastic for them, if they go Heartland, they're set up for success there as well.
I'm curious about the breakdown of boys and girls in the class, is it mostly boys in this?
Thirteen, yeah, thirteen boys and six girls, so.
Thirty-three percent.
To that point, Jade, is that the new diploma requirements that are, that begin with this freshman group really allow us for a lot more flexibility when we leave the junior and senior year as well? For example, you noticed that, probably noticed that we have a business math class in there after algebra one for the sophomore year. But we can never really count that as a, as a math requirement, but what we can now, so that's given us a lot of flexibility.
That's great.
To meet those requirements. And so the math class that they would go into doesn't necessarily have to be algebra two or P cap trig. They can get into our business technical math class to do figure that we have mapped out.
That's great, thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Item C, board to approve hiring the following classified staff. One, Marla Davenport as middle, high school paraprofessional at a pay of eleven dollars per hour, not to exceed twenty-nine point seven five hours per week. And two, J.C. Wolf as a special needs bus aide at a rate of eleven dollars per hour.
So moved, second.
Discussion.
So we are excited to have Mrs. Davenport back at Wabash City Schools, and I know the fifth grade team is super happy to have her. Ms. Wolf will serve as one of our special needs bus aides during the AM and PM routes. She is currently a para at OJ, and I know Mrs. Philippi was able to work her schedule so she can do this for us, which we greatly appreciate Mrs. Philippi doing that, and we appreciate Mrs. Wolf's willingness to take on this additional duty.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the hires, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item D, board to approve Angela Bailiff as middle school, high school FMLA lead teacher. She will earn subpay for her first fifteen days. After fifteen days, she will be paid the beginning teacher daily rate of two hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty-two cents through November seventh, twenty twenty-five.
So moved, second.
Discussion.
Ms. Bailiff does have a master's degree in English, and she is in the process of getting her emergency permit. I believe she's also considering taking the test to be able to become a certified teacher. We're thankful to find a long-term sub with her qualifications to fill in in our middle school language arts program.
All those in favor of approving the hire, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
I abstain.
Okay. Item E, board to accept the resignations from the following classified staff. One, Brock Ireland as a permanent substitute teacher effective immediately. Two, Sierra Phillips as a permanent substitute teacher at WMHS. And three, Jade Stumbo as WMS slash WHS physical education teaching paraprofessional effective August fourth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved, second.
Discussion.
Mr. Ireland and Ms. Phillips have been hired into other positions, so these resignations are just paperwork to document that they're no longer in those previous positions. And Ms. Stumbo was given the opportunity to take over as a long-term sub as a first grade teacher at another school, so we want to wish her the best of luck in her new role.
All those in favor of accepting the resignation, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I abstain.
Motion passes. Item F, board to approve Chandler Jones for half of supervision position.
So moved, second.
Discussion.
Mr. Jones will do half of the supervision role for us, the other half is currently being handled by Trenton Daughtry, so we appreciate Mr. Jones' willingness to help us out.
What's he supervising?
This is supervision at athletic events, and so it might be a night where maybe we just have a middle school volleyball game. And so when Mr. Stone does the supervision roster, he can utilize these folks to kind of make it where our administrators and Mr. Stone don't have to be there every single night.
I didn't know if it was within the school or something with athletics, okay.
All those in favor of approving the positions, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. G, board to approve hiring William Ennen to drive WHS students to and from IUK two days a week for the first semester for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year pending a background check.
So moved, second.
Discussion.
Mr. Ennen is a retired truck driver with many years of driving experience. We want to welcome him to Wabash City Schools. We are always thankful to be able to give our students the opportunity to actually go to college, get that college experience as high school students, and Mr. Ennen is helping to make, make that happen.
Is this, is an activity bus or?
Yes, yep.
Is this the first time we've done this?
Um, no.
No.
Did we? Okay.
Quite a while.
I can't remember, okay.
We started with, what was it, IFW, back when the principal created us and stuff.
Great.
All those in favor of approving the hire, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. H, board to approve that we surplus bus number seven, we will be able to sell the bus for scrap.
So moved, second.
Discussion.
The insurance company did declare that the bus was totaled. We will be receiving an insurance settlement for the bus. We're still working to try to find a bus to purchase, but schools aren't getting rid of buses, we want to get one that's about the same, go through the process to do another lease with another bus that will get eighteen. But we would have the money from the insurance to pay and then only have to lease a smaller portion, so still working on that. The bus is currently stored at a wrecker facility, once it's marked as surplus, we will have it towed to Metal Source. We will receive approximately twenty-six hundred dollars after the towing expenses. So we do have one spare bus right now, so we are working on a plan to get that second spare. I know we have another bus that is scheduled to be here next July, so we may have to go this year with just one spare bus, so.
Can we rip the tires off this one?
You had the football team push it to the metal source.
I will talk to Jeff about that, to see if that's something that we might.
Are the tires good enough to save? We're gonna be towing this thing anyways.
Go save some money.
How long do we usually keep buses?
Twelve years.
Till the wheels fall off.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. I, board to approve the transfer of Megan Handling, Handing, from fifth grade paraprofessional to WMS slash WHS physical education teaching paraprofessional at a salary of twenty-one thousand four hundred dollars, prorated for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, effective August twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
So with Ms. Stumbo's resignation, this opened up our PE teaching para at the middle school and high school. Ms. Handing initially wanted a full-time position, so we're pleased that we're able to move her into that position, and Mrs. Davenport is now going to take Mrs. Handing's para position.
All those in favor of approving the transfer, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I abstain.
Motion passes. Item J, board to approve a three hundred dollar stipend for each of the following staff. Jenny Baker, Brody Cook, Brittany Fager, Alicia Gilati, Sarah Kirkpatrick, Beth Philippi, Josie Philippi, Natasha Whitney. These stipends are for spring twenty twenty-five sessions of the Strengthening Families Program and are paid from the Eisenberger donation that we received a few years ago. Discussion, oh, sorry, yes.
What is that?
So Strengthening Families is a program that OJ offers where the entire families come in, we want parents, we want their kids, and they learn lessons. They go through training on really how to work together as a family. We've done two sessions prior to this that were reasonably successful. They did the spring of twenty-five, and I think they offered four sessions, and attendance was not good, and so they just pulled the plug on it. And so this is paying those teachers, those people, for the four, four times that they did show up. So, and the Eisenberger donation was one that we received that specifically said that you have to use it for at-risk students. And so this was a perfect program, it was just difficult to get families to show up to it.
So it's scrapped, essentially, uh-huh, it's a shame.
Yeah.
Okay.
All those in favor of approving the stipends, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item K, board to accept the resignation of Autumn Allen, cafeteria employee at WMHS, effective August twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
So moved, second.
Discussion.
Would like to thank Ms. Allen for her service to Wabash City Schools.
All those in favor of approving the resignation, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. L, board to approve a pay increase for April Fisher from eleven dollars to twelve dollars due to changes in paraprofessional responsibilities.
So moved, second.
Discussion.
Ms. Fisher has moved from a kindergarten para to a preschool para, which requires toileting and/or diaper changing. So paras that have these responsibilities do receive a slightly higher rate.
All those in favor of approving the increase, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. M, board to approve the changes of Linda Miracle and Joyce Osborne, effective August twenty-fifth, or, yes, twenty twenty-five at OJ Neighbors. Linda Miracle will be taking over as head cook. Linda will receive a seventy cents per hour pay increase. Joyce Osborne will be staying at OJ Neighbor as a cafeteria employee at a decrease of seventy cents per hour.
So moved, second.
Discussion.
So these changes are a result of changes in Indiana code. Head cooks must have the serve safe licensure. Ms. Miracle has that appropriate licensing to be the head cook. Ms. Osborne does not have that, but did wish to remain on. Ms. Osborne does not have that, but did wish to remain on as a cafeteria employee, which we appreciate.
All those in favor of approving the changes, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. N, board to approve the addition of a point five industrial technology position at WMHS for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. This position will be funded through the PCAP grant.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
So with the new PCAP program, Mr. Eiler is dedicated to that for a portion of the day, which means that we need a halftime industrial tech teacher. I think even if he wasn't doing that, our enrollment in those classes is, is going up. And so this position for this year will be funded through the PCAP grant, and as I'm working on the budget for next year, we are still working to see how we can move this into the Ed Fund for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year.
It's tough to find an industrial guy, isn't it?
That's what I was just gonna say.
Yeah.
It's quite difficult, wow.
All those in favor of approving the addition, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Items from superintendent.
We've had a great start to the school year. I've loved getting into our buildings and seeing our students and our staff, happy to be back at school. Our count is estimated to be thirteen oh nine, which is a little bit lower than what we had hoped. We still have students that are enrolling, so hopefully we'll get closer to thirteen twenty before count day in October. The guesstimate that I turned in was thirteen twenty-five, so like I said, hopefully we get a little bit closer. Wanna wish good luck to all our fall sports athletes and coaches. I know many of them are already underway, and I look forward to getting to many of these events this fall. And because we don't have another board meeting before, reminder to our families, September first is Labor Day, and school is not in session on that day.
Okay. Items from administrators.
Well, I'm super happy to, to talk a little bit about a project that we've been working on with Honeywell Arts and Entertainment in our music program. So we've collaborated with them, of course, they, they have this beautiful space that, and they have some empty space in the Eagles Theater, and we really wanted to expand our music offerings. So what we've done is flex schedules a little bit, so Brock Ireland does not come in for a first period, instead he comes in at second, which creates some space at the end of the day where he could work longer and still be under contract. And of course, we're contracted with, with Emily France as well. So what we're gonna be able to do is offer a music theater course that will take place after school, and that will be in the Ferguson Theater at, at the Eagles Theater, taught by Brock. And then Emily will be teaching a piano and a laparic keyboard class after school as well. That's starting, both those programs are starting at two days a week at the moment with, that can be expanded if we have, if we have that.
Sure. Have kids begun signing up?
They have, yes, they have until, I think, the end of the week, I'm not sure what that number looks like now. Piano, we have a cap of, I believe that's eleven students that we can have in that class. If you have any more than that, then we have to go to, we're gonna go, I think, Monday, Wednesday, then go Tuesday, Thursday as well with that group. The music theater class, however, is in Ferguson Theater, and we could have as many as, as forty kids in that particular class.
Now, why are we doing this at the Eagles rather than at the school?
Well, what we're also gonna be able to do is, is, so we have, that's a certain number of spots that we have, but what we've worked with the Eagles Theater is they want to have classes that are open to everybody as well. So if we're at the Eagles Theater, we can put that out to surrounding schools within the county, and if they have kids that are interested, we'd be able to send those in if there are empty spots, not filled by Wabash City Schools.
And how many of those piano positions have filled up?
Uh, I, I don't off the top of my head, I think around about seven or eight right now. I'm really excited about that for, for a number of reasons. I think it's foundational, the more kids that we have that are able to play the piano. And hopefully, we're gonna be able to offer this younger ages as well, that's part of what Honeywell's doing, we're working on some cool collaboration with them. But, you know, talking with Emily and our high school kids, when they go through this program, they would be in a position where they're able to teach beginning piano to younger kids. And so I, I think that's would be really interesting for our chance to increase the capacity of the Honeywell Center to be able to offer lessons.
That's one.
I can see, uh, this idea of group lessons instead of one-on-one lessons. It's definitely more efficient, and for a lot of, a lot of students, it's what's done at the college level, and for a lot of students, they learn better when they're in there with, with other students because you learn from your peers.
And these are beginning students?
Yeah, these are all high schoolers, they're gonna be beginning students.
Top six.
Did anything go up?
Excuse me?
Can they take a bus?
They haven't really talked about that, they, I think they're gonna find their way.
Okay.
They're using a carpool or whatever they do.
Trucking, okay.
Yeah. I could talk to, uh, Mrs. Callahan, we haven't had any students really inquire about that. Really, it's about, they're gonna plan to start at about four, so they have a half hour to get from the school.
Is anything going out to the parents about it?
I'm sorry?
Is anything going out to the parents about it? I know some of the students might need a little encouragement to join piano.
Right. I know, I'll, I'll have to check on that, I know, um, Mrs. France and Mr. Ireland sent stuff out to the students, I'm not sure how, how wide that went, I think they were a little worried about having an overwhelming responsibility
Sure.
And not being able to accommodate everyone, so.
Well, if other schools are feeding into it, we wanna make sure our kids-
Right, but it won't open to them until we have everybody from us that, that wants to be in, so. Same token, I think we're looking at a fall drama production.
I was gonna ask if that would-
Which is pretty musical again.
It can be helpful to do that.
Selfishly. I love that.
It was really well done.
I was just thinking about Brock with forty kids after school, oh my, oh my.
Yeah, we might need to get him a para.
I was gonna say, I thought that too. It's just as popular as I think it might be, he might need to have some help.
Yeah.
Well, OJ was good, good for him last year.
We're hurting cats.
They brought an incredible amount of energy and dedication and professionalism to our choir classes, so.
Is Emily teaching vocal music then at Wabash this year?
Yeah, she started last year, we put, kind of combined all the kids into a combined choir. So we still have that combined choir, our symphoniers group, which has kind of been that select group, will become an extracurricular program. Kids are still, kids are still able to earn credits for them, also a select group that they will audition for.
Swing choir, same way, or do they have swing choir anymore?
No, swing choir is all symphoniers at this point, but I can see that happening.
Yeah.
I feel, I feel good about, you know, like you said, the programming that we're doing in PCAP for a certain group of students, the programming that we're doing in Bine Arts for a certain group of students. I think we really have to be cognizant of having quality offerings for all of our kids.
Thank you. Do you have any?
Yeah, I'm real excited to hear all that, and kudos to the high school and the staff because that is awesome to hear all of those programs, and Brock and Emily both were at OJ, and man, they're top-notch, so that's exciting. I have to, you know, talk about the iRead scores a little bit and just say that it was a collaborative, collaborative effort from all of our teachers, right down from, you know, first grade teachers and second grade teachers piloted a new phonics program last year that was given by the state, always trying to butter our instruction, and, I mean, they, they stepped out and, and did that for us. And first grade and fourth grade teachers chose second and third grade teachers to support during testing week and did some really fun, cool things for them, right down to the kitchen staff who did some really nice snacks for us and made sure that the kids were all ready to go. We did have staff from all over the district write some really nice letters, so every student had a letter to open every day with some encouragement in it, and so I'm so proud of those staff members, they just all, I mean, it, it was just a big, a big triumph for us. So we're very excited and looking forward to what we're gonna be able to do this year.
Thank you.
Everybody wants more.
Items from board members. Start with Joan.
Today, Mrs. Philippi shared on the OJ page the free giveaway, the food, and I thought maybe the middle school and high school would wanna share that with their students also because that's available to them too, right?
Yes.
To take advantage of, and it's the entire school calendar, and they mark it on their calendar, yes.
Yes.
And there's families in need of that.
That, piggybacking off that, the first big idea is August twenty-seventh from four to five-thirty at the OJ Cafeteria. And then this Wednesday, Heartland Career Center is having their open house at six PM. So if you guys would like to come and see what the Heartland, Heartland does and meet the teachers, you're welcome. I'll be there, looking forward to that.
What night was that?
Wednesday.
Wednesday at six?
Yep.
Okay. Jason?
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay. Connie?
I think I've said enough. I, having taught and I've always had real faith in Wabash and the, and the kids who graduate from Wabash, and I'm always so proud of them. We have so much going on, and we offer something for everyone. And Josh took us through the building after the teacher meeting. And for a corporation who has sixty percent of the population, the families earn below fifty thousand dollars a year, we assume a huge responsibility for giving these kids the experiences that they need. And I know that all the parents want more for their kids and the best for their kids. They don't always know how to achieve that, but City Schools has always found a way to help make that happen for these kids. And it's, it's incredible, and anybody who moves into the county needs to examine what happens here because the kids receive a quality education and kids succeed, and I'm very proud of that. Always have been, always will be. So kudos to what's going on at the high school, and the kids can read when they get to the high school. As far as I'm concerned.
I just have to say thank you to Beth and Josh for coming to present. Really impressive, and welcome back, I'm excited for the school year, it's gonna be a great one. And with that, we're adjourned. Thank you.